Greetings and welcome to the Campaign for Humanity. This is, I believe, our third Town Hall meeting. My name is Glenn Garns and I am your candidate for community servant for all of humanity. For those of you that are just getting in, I want to welcome you to this Town Hall meeting. If you're new to the Campaign for Humanity, I want to encourage you to do two things. Number one, go to CampaignForHumanity.com and join the campaign by getting on the mailing list. If you scroll down to the bottom of the page at CampaignForHumanity.com, you can actually get on the mailing list by providing your name, your email address, and your cellphone number, so that we have the ability to be in communication with you with information that will make a difference in your life. I promise not to spam, I promise not to waste your time, I promise only to do things that will enhance the quality of life for you and for the people that you know. Once again, my name is Glenn Garns and I am your candidate for community servant for all of humanity in the Campaign for Humanity. Now, I'm not going to have the opportunity to thank everyone that's rolling into the group here, so please forgive me if I don't acknowledge you individually. I'm aware that you're here and I appreciate your presence and I especially appreciate your support. Now, we have some very important information to cover tonight. And I actually changed the agenda to address an issue that is a burning one for a lot of us who are following the presidential election cycle. You see, originally I had been covering some information related to our new, our own platform for tonight, the launch of the Village Connector Education Center, to fulfill our campaign promises a full three weeks ahead of schedule. But we made adjustments because of the fact that this is such an important topic. And as I watch what's happening on Facebook and we talk, we see all this talk about taxes and what people are paying and not paying in taxes. It's become such a big distraction that I know that people are missing the real issue here. And missing that real issue is causing you to be misinformed and misled. So my goal tonight is to help you to understand some information that might fill a gap that exists if you're limiting yourself to your information coming from politicians or the mainstream media or just through the people that are chatting about this on various social media channels. So tonight, we are going to talk about taxes. We're going to talk about the tax code. We're going to talk about how taxes are paid and we're going to hopefully help you to better understand, not just why the media is manipulating you by making the big issue about who paid what in taxes, but how also you're missing the boat if you're not understanding these things for yourself individually. The reason that this topic is so important is because it's part of our personal financial, personal economic initiative. Remember, one of our three platform initiatives, personal development, health and wellness, and personal and community economics. Tonight, we're talking about community economics to the extent that we're talking about taxes. Because taxes are also tied to entrepreneurship and how you do, what you do to go into business, which is going to be a big part of that. Now, again, I want to appreciate, I want to stop and thank the folks that are joining us tonight. Please keep in mind, we're not going to have time to acknowledge everyone tonight, but I am aware that you're here and I appreciate you because it's an indication that we're on the right track by taking the time to share this information with you. Now, before we get started, I do want to address something that's near and dear to me. Something very important happened today. Two of my sons, Evan Garns and Emmett Garns, are currently scheduled to leave for military service. And that's why you see the flags behind me. These are the, these are the flags representing the Marines. And I want to thank and honor my son Emmett Garns for making the decision to become a Marine. He's actually being sworn in tomorrow morning. And I'm very proud of him because this was a big decision on his part to serve his country and to do something that adds value to what we stand for here in America. I also want to acknowledge my son Evan Garns, who next month at about the same time will be taking off and shipping off for the Air Force. So these are both gentlemen who are making a sacrifice so that we all have the ability to live a higher quality of lives, a higher quality of life as civilians. So my hat is off to both of them. Thank you both for being wonderful sons growing up and I very much look forward to your return as a civilian after you've served your time in the service. Now, let's talk about this tax issue. The first thing that I want you to know, and you may have already figured this out by now if you're paying any attention at all to what's going on around you, but the truth is, the media, traditional media, doesn't want you to know the truth. They want you to know what's going to cause you to be in conflict with other people around you. And that's true whether, it doesn't matter what political party you belong to and that's true regardless of what your economic circumstances are. The media is definitely on a frenzy to make sure that we remain divided as a community. Now, we have the ability to reverse that. That's really what the Campaign for Humanity is about, is to reunite people in a way that we can work productively together and stop allowing ourselves to be engaged in the politics of division by allowing the manipulation to continue. So I don't care whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. I don't care if you're conservative or liberal. I don't care if you're independent. I don't care if you're libertarian. I don't care what your party of choice is. I don't care what your philosophies are. I'm going to ask you for tonight's purposes to put down the political Kool-Aid and just listen. You see, one of the problems for most of us is that we're so busy being an advocate for whatever position we've chosen to take as it relates to politics that we can't objectively receive information from other perspectives. We can't have an intelligent conversation because we're too busy trying to advocate for our own position. Well, I'm not advocating for any particular political position. I'm advocating for the truth. I'm advocating for accuracy in thought. And so with that in mind, what I'm going to share with you tonight, I'm going to show you how you can go back and so-called fact-check everything that I say tonight in a way that has nothing to do with what political party you happen to belong to. So let's talk first of all about the allegations that are being made with respect to who, what politicians are paying in taxes and what they're not. First of all, what you need to know is that the tax code is a document that has been created by the government, by our elected officials, to encourage certain types of behaviors, certain types of activities. Okay? And so if you understand that, most of what's in the tax code has been lobbied for by special interest groups from all walks of life. Not just the rich folks, not just the poor folks, not just people that belong to unions, not just people that have certain interests, for example, clean energy. They're all lobbying their legislators to have influence in some fashion in what's going into the tax code. So when you are an advocate for one aspect of the tax code but against it for someone else, you're basically being hypocritical. Because everybody is advocating for what they'd like to see that be in the tax code. So let's talk about what's in the tax code and stop putting on blinders about it. Because at least when we leave the conversation, you'll have to be honest with yourself going forward about what is, what's really in the tax code. So if we understand first and foremost, and you might even want to take some time to write some notes to yourself here, the tax code is simply a document that reflects whatever the political values are of the day. And what I mean by that is, the tax code memorializes ways that the government is seeking to influence our behaviors. And we're going to talk about those ways right now, several of them. We're not going to go through everyone. If I use a few examples, you'll understand the rest. So let's talk about some of the big ways that the government seeks to influence our behavior by giving certain incentives in the tax code to do certain things. One of the incentives that all of us will be familiar with, I think, is the marital deduction. The government actually gives you a break on your taxes if you are married filing jointly. Meaning that your husband and wife and you're filing jointly. Okay? Now, that goes back to a time when in America, the government wanted to encourage people to get married. And the reason they wanted to encourage people to get married, and this is regardless of whether you believe that this is worthy of incentivizing or not, I'm just telling you what the incentive was designed to do. The government wanted people to have kids. Because that meant more people that can enter the military. It meant more people paying taxes. It meant more people to become part of our society. So back when they made the decision to give a marital deduction, it was designed to encourage people to get married. Now, there's arguably a big problem with that. Which is that we don't need to be married to have kids. Again, that depends on what your political or your religious beliefs are. But physically and biologically, we don't have to be married to have children. Now, I don't have a position on that issue one way or the other because I'm not trying to be a politician catering to special interests in that context. I don't care what your position is. If you believe you should be married to have children, then I accept that belief on your part. If you believe that it's okay to have children out of wedlock, I'm okay with that too, because that's frankly none of my business. And I want you to understand though, that regardless of what my personal position is on these issues and what your personal position is on the issues, the purpose of the tax code's provision about marital deduction is to incentivize people to get married. Now, if you don't like that, go back to your legislators and lobby to have that changed. You know, we see a lot of, you know, information in the news about why, you know, for example, same-sex couples are being discriminated against because they're not being allowed to get married and they can't take advantage of the marital deduction because of that. Well, you know, one way to resolve that would simply be to remove the marital deduction. Because frankly, as we've already noted, biologically, you're not, it's not necessary to be married to have kids. Maybe what we ought to do is to reward having kids and give a deduction for that, which is in fact another one of the deductions in the tax code. Because all of you that have children, you know that you get a child credit. Because again, the government wants to subsidize your ability to raise children. That's why you get a dependency credit. For every child or every dependent that you have, you get a deduction. Okay? So if you understand that, those are two behaviors that the government, your elected officials have found to be worthy of incentivizing. Now, whether you agree with them or not, that's in the tax code. It's an incentive for you to engage in a particular behavior. These are known as deductions. Okay, we're going to come back, we're going to circle back a minute because in a minute, I'm going to explain the difference between so-called loopholes and deductions. Because a lot of times, we hear the media talking about loopholes as if they're sinister and as if they're like ulterior motive motivated or something like that. And the truth is that they are using that term inaccurately, at least with respect to two-thirds or more of the kinds of things they describe as being in the tax code. So let's talk about, we've already talked about the marital deduction. We've talked about the child dependency deduction. Let's talk about some of the other deductions and these are some of the ones that are in the media but being described to you inaccurately. You see, the media would have you believe right now that somewhere in the tax code, there's a section that's just for rich people. You know? And of course, I'm telling you right now that you probably have heard them talk about that the rich have lobbied for deductions for rich people. I challenge you to go into the tax code, pick up a copy of it. There is no section of the tax code that says that this section is only for the rich. What we're most likely referring to when we talk about the section of the tax code that is benefiting and helping people to become rich is the section that encourages people to start businesses. And that's what the tax code is actually about. It's not about rewarding the rich. It's about having the government encourage you to start businesses. You see, the government treats people who have businesses very differently than people who are employed by those businesses. That's why the government is, you know, that's why the media is being kind of a little bit misleading and trying to share with you in a way that makes it feel like, oh, all the people that are rich and have money, they're taking advantage, they're benefiting at our expense. The only reason you're not benefiting from that section of the code is because you have chosen to work for those companies instead of starting your own companies. For example, did you know that if you are in business for yourself, you start your own business, that the government will allow you to take a deduction for the things that you buy that generate revenue in your business? Right now, if you're an employee, you pay for internet connections, you pay for gas for your vehicle and maintenance on your vehicle, you pay for your cellphone, you pay for insurance on your car, you pay for a lot of things with what we call after-tax dollars, meaning the money that's in your net paycheck, the money you bring home, your take-home pay. Okay? When you're paying with all that with your take-home pay, there are people who have businesses that get to deduct those things before they get their take-home pay. But you're complaining about that only because you don't understand how the tax code works. If you had your own business, you would be taking those same deductions and there wouldn't be anything for you to complain about because the government would be supporting your effort to start a business the same way it's helping other people that have chosen to start businesses. So the tax code doesn't say for the rich only. It says for people who have started businesses, the government would like to help you by saving you some money so that you can get these businesses started. Now, why does the government do that? One of the reasons the government does it is because growing businesses grows the need for jobs. The more money you make in your business, the more goods and services you consume. If you have a growing business, you buy office supplies, you use office space, you buy things that you use in your business, printers and computers and things of that nature. You hire employees. Those employees then have revenue that they've got available to go and do the things that are important in their lives. So the point is, the government is looking to stimulate the economy by encouraging people to start businesses. Now, think about this for a minute. When was the last time you watched CNN, MSNBC, Fox News, or any of these other network television stations and had it explained that way to you? I'll give you a minute to think about it because that's about all it'll take. They don't talk about it that way. They're not telling you the truth. They're telling you the part of the story that will get your emotions going in a way that now demonizes people who are taking advantage of the very things that your government wanted them to do and wants you to do as well. That's one of the reasons why in our economic initiative, we're teaching people how to start businesses. We're working right now on a course called Entrepreneur Mastermind. I talked about this last week, where we're teaching you how to get started in business so that you can stop complaining about these provisions in the tax code and start benefiting from them. So again, whether something is good or bad in the tax code depends on the behavior that you choose to engage in. It has nothing to do with what's right or wrong. It has more to do with what's right for you. Now, a lot of people will tell you, well, you know, being in business isn't for everybody. I'll be the first one to acknowledge that. But I want you to show me one thing that is for everybody. The truth is that nothing is for everybody. Okay? So let's, let's start having a sincere and honest dialogue with ourselves about what's really at stake here. Which is that we are making choices every day to engage behaviors and activities that benefit us. And sometimes we're engaging in behaviors and activities that don't benefit us only because we're ignorant about where the benefit is. So what we ought to be doing is educating ourselves about where the opportunities are so we can make intelligent decisions about which ones to take advantage of. So the next time someone talks with you about how much tax this politician didn't pay or how much tax this one did pay, understand that there are provisions in the tax code that allow people to benefit by engaging in certain behaviors. For example, how many of you are advocates for solar energy and for alternative energy sources? Did you know there are provisions in the tax code that give people an incentive to do that? Did you know that when you buy an electric vehicle, you actually get a major tax deduction to help subsidize your purchase of that vehicle? How many of you have electric vehicles that are complaining about that provision? I'll give you a minute to think about it. You see, everybody has something to look forward to in the tax code. It's just a matter of how much you have to look forward to based on the activities that you choose to engage in. Now, we can have a discussion about whether you agree or disagree with some of these provisions. That's a legitimate discussion. But to demonize people that have chosen to engage in certain behaviors that the government is actually being an advocate for by having it in the tax code in the first place is just absolutely ridiculous. And I don't want you all engaged in ridiculous activity. I want you focused on the things that we can do together to move beyond all of this drama and chaos that the news media seeks to create to keep us from having intelligent discussions like this. See, the media would rather have your emotions in a tizzy so that you can't think clearly and you have to accept what they say is the truth. That's what we call political Kool-Aid. The bottom line is, when you start to think with clarity and start to understand why things are the way they are, you can then make better decisions for yourself and decide which ones to take advantage of and certainly which ones not to be paying attention to when people are trying to get you riled up over it. That's the evil that we have to overcome in the Campaign for Humanity, is learning how not to react emotionally to what we see on Facebook and what we see in the media, to be more deliberative about things. You see, I come from a legal background. I was, I'm trained as a lawyer. I practiced law for 20 years. And when I think back, the legal, the legal community or the legal system is a great model for how we should conduct ourselves in regular life. Think about this for a minute. I'm going to explain to you how the legal system works. Someone goes to court because they have a dispute with someone. Somebody sues, somebody answers the lawsuit, and then you get an opportunity to go to court and present your case. And one side gets the opportunity to present their evidence and the other side gets the opportunity to present their evidence. And then usually, a judge or a jury hears both sides of the equation and then decides based on what the law is and what they understood the facts to be, what should happen in that situation. That's the way our legal system works. Now, think about this. The first thing that they tell jurors when they come in to be sitting as a jury on a case, they ask them, can you be objective and apply the law and the facts of this case fairly? They don't want someone that comes in with a bias. They don't want someone that comes in with already decided what the facts should be and what the outcome should be. They want someone that can look at the facts and hear the law and apply it objectively. That's how our legal system works. So when you think about it, we do the direct opposite when we're on Facebook talking about what was on the television last night. You see, the news media wants you to have an emotional reaction rather than a deliberative reaction. When you react, when you react to something, that's by emotion, not by logic or by deliberation. When you respond to something, that's the part of the deliberative process. That means you took the time to think about it rather than just have an emotional reaction. So what does the media do? The media will put out videos of police brutality and of what Donald Trump or what Hillary Clinton said or what WikiLeaks shared out today. And they know that that's going to get somebody's emotions up. And when you're reacting because of emotion, it's hard for you to make quality decisions because your emotions override your natural tendency to want to find out the information. Just like you wouldn't go to a jury trial and listen to just one side of the evidence and make a decision, we shouldn't be doing that in our daily lives. Now, I'll be the first one to admit, it's hard to get the truth out here these days. You can watch Fox News and then turn to some other, you know, CNN, MSNBC, Channel 7, whatever it is, whatever the, whatever the opposite of that would be. And you can be having them tell the same, watching the same situation. You know, whatever, whether it was a police, a police shooting or whether it was a protest. And if you were to watch both of those, you would swear that those people were watching completely different events based on how they presented the information. So it's really hard sometimes to know what the truth is. But here's the point. It's very difficult for you to make a decision as to what to support if you don't have the truth. So when you're ranting on Facebook or Twitter or LinkedIn or someplace else about what's going on in the media and you haven't taken the time to really think about what's really happening, have you deliberated over it? Have you gathered the information and asked the right questions? You're allowing yourself to be manipulated. You are becoming part of the problem by participating in a system that is misleading you. And I don't want to see anyone misled. I want to see people be able to stop and think and ask the right questions and be able to get the information they need to make a deliberative responsive decision as to what they stand, how they stand on that issue, whatever it might be. The problem is, it's always easier for us to let other people tell us what we should think instead of stopping to think for ourselves. And that's what we have to look to reverse. We have to be willing to take responsibility for doing our homework. From the beginning of time, when we were in school, we were taught to do our homework. Why is it any different when we've graduated from high school and college? We stopped doing our homework, we start letting the media tell us what the result is. Can you imagine if you walked into college, walked into a test and the teacher sat there and told you all the answers and you just wrote them down and accepted them and then left it at that? My English teacher in high school would have told you that that was the opposite of smart. She didn't like to call us stupid, so she used to say that was the opposite of smart. It took us a little while to figure out that she was calling us stupid. But that's exactly what it would be. But that's exactly what we do every day when we allow some story in the media from one news outlet to affect how we feel about a particular issue. Why don't we stop allowing ourselves to be manipulated by asking more questions? If you're inclined to believe a certain way and you, because you've watched it on CNN or MSNBC or whatever, you know, whatever your normal channel is, turn to whatever you perceive to be the opposite of that channel and see what that perspective is. And now, you can be guaranteed that the truth is somewhere in the middle and you probably haven't even heard the truth yet. But at least you get a chance to see how manipulative both sides of the coin are. You see, both of them can't be right in the way that they present that information. So the bottom line is that if you're going to express an opinion on something, if you're going to hold a position on something, you owe it to yourself to get to the truth. And the best way to get to the truth is to ask more questions and be open to the answers. You see, it doesn't make sense to ask a question if your mind has already been made up about a particular issue. That's also a matter of ignorance. The bottom line is that, if we will go back to the tax code, everybody in society is lobbying Congress and the Senate to have favorable treatment in the tax code. Every section of the tax code, there's somebody that is in favor and somebody that's against that provision. And it's just a matter of what elected officials choose to put in there based on whoever frankly is the most compelling lobbyist. And sometimes that's a matter of who's supporting them the heaviest. And sometimes that's the matter of not necessarily who has the most money, but who's backing them in other ways. You know, there are some people that are for alternative energy and some people that are against it. But the tax code's got provisions in there that incentivize people to develop alternative energy. Some people are for the Affordable Care Act and some people are against it. But we've got the Affordable Care Act. Some people are for businesses getting started and some people are against it. But there's, there are incentives in the tax code to encourage people to start businesses. So let's stop pretending that the tax code is controlled by people who have it in for you. If you want to start taking advantage of what's in the tax code, start, start engaging in some of the behaviors that the tax code rewards. You know, don't complain about the marital deduction, go get married. I'm not telling you to go get married, that was a joke. But seriously, if you are looking at people that are benefiting from the tax code because they've started businesses, maybe you should be asking the right questions to determine whether starting a business is right for you. Certainly before you demonize somebody else that has, think about it this way. For those of us that are employed full-time, the reason you've got a job is because somebody else can write off your salary as a business expense. If they weren't able to get incentivized by the government, you might not have a job. Think about it from that perspective. But you also could be the one stimulating your local economy by starting a business and helping to create jobs by knowing what's in the tax code and taking advantage of it for yourself and for your community and for the benefit of your neighbors. Think about how many people you might be able to hire in your business if you had the ability to get one started. Start seeing where there's opportunity instead of tragedy. Stop allowing other people to manipulate your thought process because you're not taking the time to think clearly about it. Let's start talking with each other instead of at each other. And the reason I chose to focus on this is because I watch very carefully what the dialogue that is taking place in Facebook is happening, what that's happening, turning into every day. And I direct my attention to trying to help people understand more about why people have their panties in a bunch over a particular issue rather than understanding what questions to ask to resolve that for themselves. But the bottom line is that if we start asking more questions and we start being more open to having a discussion about these things, we can all educate ourselves more effectively so that we can make better decisions. At least we'll have a better understanding of things because we won't allow people to tell us how we should think and feel about a particular issue. And that's unfortunately what our political system has devolved into. It's people simply looking to manipulate your emotions on both sides of the coin. And if there was a third side of a coin, they would be trying to manipulate you there too. Because it's all about manipulation. And we fall for it every single time because we're being And we fall for it every single time because we're being lazy and we're being emotional about the issues. If something is important enough for you to have a position on it, it's important enough for you to ask questions and to get the right information. And the more we start talking to each others, talking with each other, the less we're going to be subject to manipulation. If we can stop having rants in these Facebook feeds and, and really ask each other questions, why is it that you support that? What is, what is it about that that's attractive to you? What do you see in it? If you can really have an objective conversation with people about things, then now all of a sudden, you can find out a lot more, you can learn a lot more by asking questions than you can by ranting at somebody. There is a book that I want to encourage you to read. It's called, there's two books actually, I'm going to talk about both of them. But one of the books I want you to read is called How to Win Friends and Influence People by Dale Carnegie. How to Win Friends and Influence People by Dale Carnegie. There's a chapter in that book where Dale Carnegie talks about this quote. "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still." And what that basically means is if somebody's entrenched in their belief, it doesn't matter what you say or what you call them on Facebook, you're not going to change their position. You're not going to change people's positions by ranting and railing at them. You're going to change positions by educating yourself and looking to educate others and being able to objectively entertain other people's ideas. So if you understand that, you're basically engaging in the problem by posting, repeating political posts on Facebook and ranting at the people who differ with you on a particular issue. You should try sitting down with these people and having a cup of coffee and having a sincere discussion about the issue, not with respect to what you believe and what I believe, but what can we do together about this issue? You see, we're famous for engaging in all kinds of protests and picketing and boycotting. But if we were to sit down together and talk with each other while we're on either side of the picket line or the protest line, we'd probably find that, hey, look, you know, this isn't as big a deal as we thought it was. Why don't we sit down and talk about it and see if we can come up with a better solution? You see, most of the time, what we're advocating for isn't even the solution, no matter what side of the coin you're on. But if we pooled our resources and we're able to have an intelligent conversation, we'd actually find that, hey, we didn't even think about this other way that something could be done because we were so blinded by our own belief system. That's part of the problem. It's ingrained in us. And if we want to fix the problem, we have to start by being willing to fix ourselves. And that's why Village Connector Community is focused first on helping each individual to invest in themselves through personal development. Personal development changes your mindset. It enhances your ability to think. And when you enhance your ability to think, you're less subject to some of this manipulation. And then when you associate with other people who are also changing their ability to think, now you've got a team of people who can look at an issue and really sit down to come up with a solution instead of just trying to badmouth each other for not believing it the way they choose to believe it. Which is all that's happening in the media, it's all that's happening in politics, and it's all that's happening on Facebook. Now, again, I want to be part of the solution. I'd like to see more of you join me in being able to enhance your ability to think and then have a discussion about how we can work together to resolve issues. The truth is, if we are really open to working together, there is nothing we can't accomplish. The only thing that keeps us from doing more together is our unwillingness to work together with people who think differently than us. And that is being fueled by the emotional manipulation that takes place every day in the media, in our political discussions, and everything else that we have going on in traditional society. If we want to see change, we've got to be willing to change the way we interact with each other. We've got to be willing to change our ability to objectively entertain a thought without being threatened in our own belief system just because somebody thinks differently than we do. You know, I've got people that won't talk to me because I eat meat, and they're vegans. That's crazy. But it exists because some people are so passionate about their veganism that they can't have a reasonable, again, have a relationship with someone that doesn't believe the way they believe. We see that in religion every day. We see it in all aspects of our lives. Why do we allow that to be the way that we live? Are you really excited to get up in the morning and to call somebody out because they believe something differently than you? Some of you are actually. But it's because you've been conditioned to enjoy that. If you look at what we see on television, the types of TV shows that we watch, it's always drama and chaos. It's because we have developed an appetite for it, and now the media is simply feeding that appetite. They're giving us exactly what we want, even though they're the very ones who helped us to develop the appetite for it. It's kind of like a drug dealer. They'll give you free samples to try it out, and the next thing you know, you're hooked on it, and now they're the source for it all day long. If you understand that that's what's happening to you, then it's your responsibility to change it. It's nobody else's responsibility for you to change your mind. You have that privilege and that obligation reserved to yourself. So going forward from this day, you can either choose to enhance your quality of thought by engaging in personal development and being a little bit more objective and open to hearing other people's perspectives and discussing ideas, which also involves discussing ways that we can address issues versus simply being an advocate for whatever it is you currently believe and trying to force it down somebody else's throat. Because that's exactly what our political system is. Let me get into office so that I can dictate to somebody else the way it should be. That's not the way that humanity will evolve. Our political system is kind of backwards. It's this constant fight and struggle to see who can control the other side. When it should be an engagement process that allows us to sit down and pool our collective intelligence to come up with solutions that serve everyone. You don't see that happen in our political system because we've moved so far away from what's right to who can be right. So I want to encourage you to maybe start fresh. Let's start with a new approach to this whole idea of politics. Let's start with a fresh idea that we're going to lurk together with each other, starting in our local communities. By sitting down and having a dialogue with the people that we differ with and seeing for the first time why you believe what you believe. And whether I agree with you or not, I can accept that that's your perspective. But based on your perspective and I perspect, my perspective, is there a way for us to work together? And I'm not talking about having to compromise. I'm not talking about having to cave in because somebody else believes differently than you. What I'm talking about is, your position cannot possibly be the only solution for things. There's usually multiple solutions, and we can find those solutions if we stop trying to force our solution down someone else's throat. So I hope that you'll take this seriously because again, I chose to address this issue tonight because it's getting to the point where the closer we get to the election, the more manipulation you're going to see. That's the reality of the way our system works. Now, you can choose to continue to participate in that, in that fashion, or you can choose a different way for yourself right now. I would encourage you to think about doing something a little bit different. If you're not happy with what you see happening in society, if you're not happy with what's happening in your life, if you're not happy with what you see happening around you, maybe it's time to try something different. And maybe the difference would be to turn off the television, turn off the radio. And maybe when you come onto Facebook, you could actually have a discussion with someone instead of a rant. Maybe in the discussion forums in our groups and things of that nature, we can ask people questions, get to know each other a little bit better, and understand what people's contribution to the community could be instead of spending all of our time demonizing people that we either don't understand or don't want to have a relationship with because the media has painted them as being the problem. So again, intelligent people act intelligently. Intelligence is deliberation. Ignorance is emotion. If you are reacting emotionally, you are probably keeping yourself in ignorance. Ignorance simply means you're not allowing yourself to know. It's not a matter of being stupid, it's not a matter of not being intelligent. It's a matter of not allowing yourself to know something. Let's change that dialogue, let's change the way we act with each other. I would encourage you tomorrow to reach out to the person you've been ranting at the most and invite them just to have a chat with you. Hey, why do you think that way? What, what's, you know, what, how did you develop that thought process? I mean, how did you get introduced to the notion that this is the way it is? Have you ever entertained any other ideas? I guarantee you that most people will stop and say, you know, I haven't really thought about whether there's another option. You know, John Kennedy said once, and I don't know if this was his quote or whether he just is getting credit for it, "Let's not do it the democratic way or the republican way, let's do it the best way." I know the quote really started, "Let's not do it my way or your way, let's do it the best way." And I guarantee you that if there is a democrat way, democratic way, if there's a republican way, if there's a libertarian way, that none of those ways is the best way until we've combined them and considered how we can collectively come up with a solution that everyone can live with. It's amazing how much can get done when it doesn't matter who gets the credit. And that's the other thing, is we have to stop trying to manipulate each other by having someone get credit. We should not allow our Congress and our elected officials to put legislators' names on legislation. It shouldn't be a matter of having your name and lights on a piece of legislation. If it's worth doing, put it in the name of humanity, put it in the name of, of the community. Why should an elected official have their name on legislation? That's crazy. But we allow it every day because we are more focused on the things that are distracting us from what's really going on. Now, I want to keep this brief. I've shared with you what I wanted you to know tonight. There was one other book I want to recommend for you. And I don't get any, I don't get a commission for recommending this book. It's just a book that I found to be very valuable. That book is called Lower Your Taxes Big Time by Sandy Botkin. That's S-A-N-D-Y-B-O-T-K-I-N. And Sandy would be tickled pink to hear me promoting his book. I met Sandy over 20 years, uh, almost, almost 20 years ago, 17 years ago. And this book helps you as a layperson understand the sections of the tax code that benefit you when you choose to start a business. How many of you know that if you were made a commitment tonight to start a business, that you could walk into your employer tomorrow and probably take some additional deductions that would allow you to put new money in your pocket today based on what you'll now be able to write off in your new business? Ah, that reminds me, I forgot one thing. Talking about the tax code, so let me finish on the Sandy Botkin thing. So the book is called Lower Your Taxes Big Time by Sandy Botkin. And it's, it's written from a layperson's perspective, so it's very easy to understand. But let me tell you who Sandy Botkin is. Sandy Botkin is a licensed attorney who also happens to be a licensed CPA, Certified Public Accountant, who was a former IRS agent who used to train IRS agents on how to audit you. Now, if there's anybody that knows what the tax code is about, I would think that Sandy Botkin would be one of those people. And you owe it to yourself, if you've got questions about any of this stuff, to go pick up his book and find out for yourself from someone who was on the inside of the IRS, who was there to train people how to audit you. He cites chapter, verse, and rhyme, everything that he documents that you're entitled to in the tax code. And all you've got to do is go educate yourself on it. Or you can continue to rely on what you hear in the media as your source of intelligent information. I'm not going to tell you which one of those is going to yield the better result for you. I can only tell you that I found that Sandy's book is a very objective way to learn what the tax code holds for you. Now, with that in mind, I also wanted to debunk this myth about the term loopholes. You see, the media is very, very fond of using the term loopholes to refer to sections of the tax code that they don't like. So when they talk about business owners and people on Wall Street and anybody else that's in business taking advantage of loopholes, they're being misleading. But you don't know that because you haven't taken the time to understand the difference between incentives in the tax code and loopholes. So let's debunk that myth. First of all, a loophole is when there is an unintended consequence of a tax provision or of any law. In other words, there is something that, that happened in the way that the law was written that yielded a result that was different than what the law was intended to do. In other words, it's usually sloppy legislation. It's when people rush to put laws into place because they're so busy trying to get it through before somebody really sees what's in it, that they do a sloppy job of it, and it ends up doing something that was different than what was intended. And so that's why most of the time loopholes go back and are filled when someone discovers, hey, wait, that's not what we intended to do with that law. But then when you go into the tax code and their entire sections in there that were designed to encourage people to go into business, that's not a loophole. That was, that was by intention. So a loophole is unintended consequences. Incentives are exactly the purpose the legislation was created, to, the result of legislation was created to, to incentivize. So when you hear loophole, make sure, you know, you should, I wish we could, I wish we could have a debate where we get some of these journalists that write and mislead you on the stage and put a moderator there and ask them these questions. You know, why is the provision that allows me to take deductions for these things a loophole? They probably wouldn't even know the difference. But frankly, I think they do know the difference, they're just not telling you what it is because they want you to be in a position of ignorance so that you're dependent on them for what you should think about a particular issue. So a loophole is an unintended consequence of a piece of legislation usually because of sloppy legislating, legislating. In other words, our elected officials are not doing their job. But if something was specifically designed to be part of the legislation and it's yielding the result that was originally intended, that is not a loophole. You might not like the legislation, but it's not a loophole. So keep that in mind. Don't allow yourself to be misled every time you hear the media talk about loopholes in the laws. You need to do a little bit more investigation. You need to ask a few more questions. And you need to stop allowing yourself to be the victim of manipulation. You owe it to yourself and your community to ask the right questions and to take the right actions based on the truth. Be a, be a truth seeker. Be somebody that positions themselves with the right information and asks the right questions before you choose to characterize someone or the other. So with that in mind, I want to thank you for joining us for the town hall meeting tonight. I want to give you some encouragement to get behind this movement. If you've enjoyed any of the information I shared tonight, if you find value in what we're doing here, I want to encourage you to do two things. Number one, please go to our website and become part of our online community. You can do that by going to places. Actually, I'm going to give you one place. The best place to go is villageconnector.com. W-W-W dot villageconnector.com. And I'd appreciate if someone would type that into the comment section as I'm discussing this. If you go to the website at villageconnector.com, you can scroll to the bottom of the front page and you can get on our mailing list to join our email community. We use that email list to alert you to events like tonight's event, to let you know about free information that you can access and start to, start the process of educating yourself on some of these issues. You'd be surprised how much information we've assembled to make it possible for you to invest in your number one asset, which is always going to be you. You see, the media is devaluing your number one asset by encouraging you not to think. I want to help you to grow your number one asset by giving you the tools to engage in the right thought process for you. So if you go to villageconnector.com and you scroll down to the bottom, you can get on the mailing list and be assured of being notified about events like this. The second thing I'd like you to do, since most of you are on Facebook, surprise, that's where we are tonight, is to join the Village Connector Community. We have our own group, it's open to the public. We don't use it for a whole bunch of promotion of products and services and, so please don't come in there trying to promote your businesses and your network marketing opportunities, that's not what we're there for. We're here to have a dialogue with each other, to share information that helps us to grow together, to have a discussion where we're talking with each other, not at each other. So if you go to Village Connector Community, we have both a fan page and a group. I encourage you to like the fan page, join the group. And when you come in there, be prepared to embrace your neighbors, not engage in conflict with them. You can leave that outside. Leave your conflict at the door, bring your heart inside. And I promise that if we can do that consistently, there is no problem that faces the humanity that we couldn't resolve together. My name is Glenn Garns, and I want to thank you for joining us for the Campaign for Humanity Town Hall Meeting this evening. And I want you to know that there's room for you in the village. We encourage you to... We encourage you to become an active part of the Village Connector Community. We need you in the village because it takes a village to address the challenges that humanity faces. But there is no challenge that humanity cannot face when we do it together. If we go, we go together. Let's make sure that that's our mantra rather than some of the other things that we've allowed to distract us to this point in time. Again, I want to thank you for joining us for this Campaign for Humanity Town Hall. We have another one coming up for the month of October at the end of the month, the last Sunday in October. Will be our last town hall meeting before the election. And we'll be announcing the launch of the Learning Center. I was going to do that tonight, we're going to hold that because this was more important for tonight's purposes. So come back and see what we've done to fulfill our campaign promises before the election takes place. My name is Glenn Garns, I am a candidate for community servant for all of humanity and I approve of this message.